We're looking good. How you doing?
Good, 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 good. You all right?
Doing all right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the April regular meeting of the County Legislature. Will everyone please rise for the invocation to be delivered by Pastor Moore?
Let's pray together. Lord, we come before you this very evening with gratitude and hope for your continued guidance and direction in our lives. We do pray tonight for those who are enduring the ravages of war, and we pray that somehow that we would find men and women of peace who would speak to those situations, and you would alleviate and relieve those who are in need. And thank you for each person that's here tonight, the citizens, the residents, and the legislators. Give them grace and favor and help in the challenges of their life. And we do pray that all decisions tonight would be used to the glory of God and to the betterment of the people that we are intended and chosen to serve. We thank you for it all, in your precious name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Legislative Frisoni.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move to our legislative conference this evening, we have some presentations to make. At this time, I'd like to invite my colleagues from Legislative District Four and the representatives from the Duane'sburg Girls Varsity Basketball Team to join me in the well. One of the nicer things we get to do as County legislators is to recognize different sports organizations from throughout the county on their success during their normal seasons. And it's our great pleasure this evening to congratulate the Duane'sburg Girls Varsity Basketball Team on becoming the Class C Section Two champions and on their outstanding 2022 season. Want to do something?
No, you go ahead.
You sure? Okay. Okay, it's good. Whereas, the Duane'sburg Girls Varsity Basketball Team has worked tirelessly to finish off an extremely successful basketball season. And whereas this year, the Lady Eagles made history by bringing home Duane'sburg Central Schools' first-ever varsity girls' basketball Class C Section Two title with a sixty-four, forty-seven defeat over Greenwich. And whereas the team then moved on to represent Section Two in the NYSPHSAA Class C Girls Basketball State Tournament, the first appearance in state playoffs in Duane'sburg Central Schools' history. And whereas the team is comprised of Alex Moses, Allison Bates, Allison O'Hanlon, Cassidy Mekus, Dana Isa? Pretty good, huh? Ella Moses, Hannah Mulhern, Ilana Guevara, Kate O'Hanlon, Lauren Capron, and Madison Meyer. And whereas, along with highly successful coaching by Chris Heron, the team should be proud of all their accomplishments this season. And whereas, along with ongoing and significant support from coaches, parents, and the community, the team worked extremely hard all season and accomplished great things. Now therefore be it resolved that this Schenectady County Legislature celebrates and recognizes the Duane'sburg Lady Eagles Varsity Basketball Team and congratulates them on their successful 2022 season. How about that? Coach, come on up. Say something.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. The girls appreciate the recognition. Thank you. Thanks for the support.
You're welcome. Looking forward to next year, right? There you go.
Thank you very much.
Very welcome. Thanks. Thanks, girls. Thank you.
Thanks.
Legislative McGary was a teacher in Duane'sburg and had some of these young ladies in sixth grade, I believe. Congratulations. And if we could also have into the well the Shamont Girls Basketball Team. So, the resolution congratulating the Shamont Girls Basketball Team on their outstanding 2022 season and for winning the Class B New York State Public High School Athletic Association Championship. Whereas, the Shamont Girls Basketball Team has achieved outstanding success in the 2022 season by delivering a fifty-six, fifty-four victory over the state's top-ranked ranked team Waterloo at Hudson Valley Community College. And whereas, this win has allowed the Lady Sabers to finish their basketball season with a twenty-seven-one record and to become the NYSPHSAA Class B Champions. And whereas, for the first time in Shamont Girls Basketball history, the team has secured a state title. And whereas, the team comprised of Arianna Brandon, Ashley Boyd, Dana Smith, Gianna Cirilla, Haley Burkhardt, Justina Sbezza, Carissa Antoine, Michaela Frank, Peyton Graber, Sienna Halberg, Sarah Kindlin should be incredibly proud of all their hard work. And whereas, through successful coaching by Jeff Van Hosen, strong community and parent support, and overall tremendous teamwork and dedication, the Lady Sabers have achieved a thrilling win and completed a historic season. Now therefore be it resolved that this Schenectady County Legislature congratulates the Shamont Girls Basketball Team on their win and recognizes the completion of their successful 2022 season as two thousand twenty-two New York State Class B Champions. Congratulations. Thank you so much for having us. We appreciate you guys. We appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Yeah, my name is Josh Cuomo. I just want to give my personal congratulations to you guys. I'm a Shamont alum. I was a wrestling coach for many, many years at Shamont. I know all of your coaches personally. I'm friends with them. And I just want to say congratulations. I even substitute taught at Shamont for a little while, so for a couple of years. So I just want to say I'm very proud of you. I know the whole Shamont community was behind you guys, and this is huge for us. And, you know, congratulations once again. This is awesome.
We have one final ceremonial resolution on the agenda this evening proclaiming April 2022 as Autism Awareness Month in Schenectady County, and I would like to ask Legislative Pratt to read the resolution into the record at this time.
Thank you. So my sister Emily is on the autism spectrum, and this is a resolution that is very near and dear to my heart as I know it is to so many people in our community. So this is a resolution proclaiming April 2022 as Autism Action Month. Whereas, the prevalence of autism in the United States has risen from one in one hundred and fifty children in the year 2000 to one in forty-four children in 2022, highlighting the need for urgent action. And whereas, people of all abilities deserve to fully participate in their communities and live fulfilling lives of dignity and respect, including those who are living with the most significant disabilities. And whereas, April has widely been known as Autism Awareness Month or Autism Acceptance Month in the United States in an effort to educate the public, foster understanding and inclusivity, and shine a light on the systemic barriers people with autism face in their daily lives. And whereas, we celebrate differences and promote the acceptance of people with autism, emphasizing that individuals with autism and their families deserve the opportunity to thrive. And whereas, it is crucial that our work doesn't stop at awareness and acceptance, we recognize the need to advance policies that better provide services and supports for early intervention, education, transition to adulthood, employment, and community living. And whereas, the Schenectady County Legislature honors those with autism and their families and recognizes the need to be aware of, accept, and appreciate the incredible diversity within the autism spectrum, now therefore be it resolved that the Schenectady County Legislature proclaims April 2022 as Autism Action Month to help spread further awareness of the realities of autism, promote acceptance in our community, and ignite change to ensure that the universal human rights of all autistic people are respected.
Thank you, Legislative Pratt. When I move to our legislative conference, the Rules Committee, Chairman Legislative Fields.
The Rules Committee has now come to order. First item on the resolution, number twenty-five, a resolution congratulating Duane'sburg Girls Varsity Basketball Team for becoming Class C Section Two champions and their outstanding season, 2022 season. Any comments on this particular resolution? May I have a motion?
So moved.
That's a second from someone?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The resolution is moved. Resolution number twenty-six, a resolution congratulating the Shamont Girls Basketball Team on their outstanding 2022 season and for winning the Class B New York State Public High School Athletic Association Championship. Any comments?
Move to the agenda.
Moved. There may have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The resolution is moved. Resolution number twenty-seven, a resolution proclaiming April 2022 as Autism Action Month. Move this.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The resolution's been moved. Resolution number twenty-eight, a resolution amending the 2022 capital improvement program to provide additional funding for the underground fuel tank replacement project at Kellner Avenue in the town of Rotterdam.
Chairman Fields, this is an amendment to the 2022 capital budget for the replacement of three forty thousand, three twelve thousand gallon fuel tanks that are over forty years old. It's time for their replacement. When we first put the capital budget together last summer, we were working on an estimate of roughly seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. When we received bids back recently, those bids came in a little bit higher than anticipated by approximately forty-two thousand dollars. This budget amendment will provide the necessary appropriation authority to replace those tanks. Given the lead time in terms of supply chain issues, it's important that we try to get these refuel tanks ordered now so they'll be available later this year.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Move to report. Mr. Hughes, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The resolution's been moved. Resolution number twenty-nine, a resolution regarding the acceptance of monies from the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services for programs to reduce gun violence.
On behalf of Sheriff DiAgostino, this is a request to amend the 2022 operating budget by fifty thousand dollars to accept funding from the New York State Department of Criminal Justice Services associated with the Discovery Compensation Grant. The sheriff is interested in using this funding for the Youth Life Support Network to reduce gun violence within Schenectady County.
Any questions?
Yes, I have one. What exactly does the program do? Is it education? Is it, what does the program do? I'm not familiar with it.
At some point, the sheriff and the undersheriff will put together a scope of work and services that they're looking to for a vendor to come in and provide. But it's going to be education, some, perhaps some extracurricular activities for youth so they have alternatives outside of violent activities.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Hughes? I can provide a little bit more detail on this. This is part of an ongoing program that our sheriff runs as outreach into the, into the community, particularly looking at individuals, younger folks who are perhaps a bit more prone to be engaged in gun violence. And he has had a considerable amount of success, the program has, in terms of reducing instances of gun violence. And it's one of several reasons why Schenectady City typically statistically runs somewhat behind the other tri-city municipalities, Albany and Troy, through this kind of intense intervention program that our sheriff's department runs. Sure the money will be well spent. And if you need a resolution, I'll move it.
Resolution's been moved by Mr. Hughes. May I have a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution's been moved. Resolution number thirty, a resolution to amend the 2022 operating budget to provide funding for improvements to the Glendale, Glendale and Rotterdam branch libraries.
Thank you, Chairman Fields. The library received two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a bequest designated specifically for the Glendale branch. The library board of trustees is looking to amend its 2022 operating budget for the library board of trustees by roughly a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to offset the the costs associated with the renovation at the Glendale branch. There's also a, the amendment in front of you also allocates fifty-three thousand dollars for improvements at the Rotterdam branch associated with the circulation area as well.
Move to the agenda.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The resolution's been moved. Resolution number thirty-one, a resolution regarding the acceptance of monies from the American Library Association to support programming in the humanities, a ten thousand dollar grant.
So the library board of trustees, I think last fall was notified that it received ten thousand dollars in grant funding from the National Endowment for the Humanities, which was linked to the American Rescue Plan. This budget amendment simply provides the appropriation authority for the library board of trustees to provide additional programming services for all branches for the benefit of Schenectady County residents.
Any questions? Thank you very much. May I have a?
Move to the agenda.
Move. May I have a second? Second, Mrs. May. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The resolution's been moved. Thank you, Mr. Jonathan Phillips. Our next item is resolution number thirty-two, a resolution to authorize the shift differential bonus for certain employees of the Glendale Nursing Home. And I will say, Tony Z, right? Todd Z. Thank you, Mr. Fluman.
This provision we're proposing, we're hoping will help us to assist with increasing staffing levels on the second and third shift to help meet the New York State minimum staffing mandate that's been enacted January first. At this time, we are meeting the mandate about forty percent of the time. So we would be increasing our shift differential from ten percent to thirty percent, capping it actually at thirty percent.
Just to add, just a little bit more background too. We've had the benefit of the New York State National Guard. Earlier in the year, the governor made available guardsmen to come in and be nurses aides. So we've had about five to six rotating guardsmen in. We tend to use them Thursday through Sunday shifts. Those are our harder shifts to staff. Just in the status of all nursing homes, you know, traditionally in the nursing home industry, it's hard to find staffing. Certainly COVID exacerbated that. We did address that in the most recent eleven ninety-nine contract negotiations to try to raise salaries of CNAs, LPNs, RNs. This body also approved a retention bonus for new employees to come. As you'll see in the governor's budget, as the details come out, there is more state monies for these activities, for bonuses, for increasing pay for our nurses. We are effectively trying to get ahead of it. Once the National Guard pulls out, we're going to be at more of a risk of not being in compliance. Some of these new fees can be two hundred dollars a day, upwards of two thousand dollars a day. Still not clear guidance on if we're going to be ascribe those fees if we're not at the minimum requirements. But the time to act certainly is very soon to try and bump up our pay, whether it's to increase folks coming in from the community, you know, getting those folks from other nursing homes to work at our nursing home, getting retention so that we don't lose our employees. Or even the concept too is, you know, if you're a day employee, that you could earn that extra shift differential by staying an extra four hours or coming in on a weekend. Our folks at our nursing home have worked very hard through COVID. This is not even a reward. This is just becoming a necessity to increase our pay for our folks that work there.
Manager Fluman, I just noted, we have the option in six months to, is it going to auto renew? Or is it going to come back in front of this body for certification?
So if on some strange level, we become fully staffed, certainly in my time here as manager, we haven't been one hundred percent staffed at our nursing home, the idea is to be able to turn it off if need be. Our differentials, depending on the contract you are, depending on CNA, LPN, RN, range from seven to twenty-two percent right now. So this is going to be a very nice homogenization of newer staff being able to have access to that higher shift differential and even for some of our more traditional or longer-standing employees to incentivize them to come and work on the weekends. Yes, we can turn it off in six months. I'm anticipating most likely we will not, and we will just fold this into my 2023 budget asks to you folks.
And just so I'm clear, you said seven to twenty percent. This standardizes, we're going to go to no more than thirty?
No more than thirty percent shift differential, evenings and weekends, for direct care, CNAs, LPNs, RNs.
Only for those job classifications?
Those are the positions that are currently mandated as part of the minimum staffing requirements.
Critical minimum staffings.
And right now, our other positions were fairly full, so we don't have as many challenges recruiting.
Thank you.
Move the resolution to the agenda.
For Mr. Hughes, movement on the resolution. May I have a second? Second, thank you, Ms. Otchelish. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The resolution's been moved. Our final resolution this evening is resolution number thirty-three. Thank you very much. Resolution this evening is to award, awarding funds to various organizations pursuant to the 2022 county initiative program. And there's a list of organizations there. Any questions?
I would just point out that laid on our desks this evening was a corrected version of this resolution. There was one in the original resolution that did not indicate that the Hamilton Hill Arts Center award was to support their Juneteenth program, so.
Correct.
That's clear in here. And it's good to see this program back and being funded again. Another little sign of emerging normalcy. We hope.
That is correct. Any questions? Any other questions? Yes.
I just want to say that these programs mean so much to the community, and it's a real source of pride to know that our legislator and our county government is supporting them because I love the distribution geographically and all of the different organizations involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a lot of thought that goes into it by the legislative staff, taking time to score, review, so that there's fairness amongst these awards. They do a very good job with it.
Move to the agenda.
Move to report.
All right, move to report. We second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The resolution has been moved. And with that, Mr. Chair, I would say that the Rules Committee has come to an end.
Thank you, Legislative Fields. It is now time for privilege of the floor. Members of the public who wish to speak should come to the podium. Give us your name and address for the record. Try to keep your comments to three minutes and be respectful in what you say and direct your comments to me as chair of this meeting. Anyone wishing to comment during privilege of the floor?
Hello, Betsy Sandberg, seven eight two West Moreland Drives, Schenectady, New York, one two three oh nine. I'm not going to sing this year. And Mr. Jocinski, I forgot to give you some feathers, but I'll get them to you. So you should all have some feathers and crayons. Thanks to your support, the Twenty-Eighth Annual Kids Arts Festival will soar. And you can be part of that. Decorate as many feathers as you'd like. Or perhaps your kids or your grandkids will want to do it. Don't worry about staying inside the lines. When you're done, I can come pick them up, or you can bring them to Kids Arts Fest on June fourth. I've seen many of you there. Where Fran Giordano will be assisting kids in creating the first-ever Electric City Rainbow Eagle. The eagle will be finished in the weeks after Kids Arts Fest and unveiled at the Kid Zone at summer night. And this eagle is not the only thing that will fly high. Oscar Bolgran received a grant to create a mural during our festival. He is working with Schenectady High School kids right now as they finalize the design that will honor both the open door bookstore and a popular restaurant. And I bet you can guess the design of a very popular children's book that features eating and talks about growth and change and turns into something very beautiful. Anyway, we are already up to fifty-three activities, including Alex Torres and his Latin Orchestra, who will kick off- Anyway, we are already up to fifty-three activities, including Alex Torres and his Latin Orchestra, who will kick off the festival with a high note at noon. Celebrate Summer is our theme, and this will be continued when we help with the Kid's Zone activities at Summer Night, which we are so looking forward to. And it's not just Kids Arts Festival. It's wonderful to see such a variety of activities the county legislature is funding, like Jazz on Jay, June ninth through September first, and Create Together's art activities, and Downtown Schenectady's Fall Spectacular, and Color the Canal, and Bird Walks, the Schenectady Symphony Orchestra, Music Haven, the list goes on, as does our imaginations. And I'd like you to introduce you to one of our newest artists, Mr. Rel Dolo, who with support like yours is going to help elevate some minds.
Thank you, Betsy. How you doing? My name is Tyrell Outlaw. I am an educator in Schenectady City School District, or in City Schenectady. I'm currently working for Beginnings in Schenectady. I work with the City School District. I am also a rapper as well. So I'm a teacher, and I'm a rapper as well. I balance both. I'm a father as well. Recently, I completed with the help of the Schenectady Foundation and the Seat Center, we completed a project called Jalen's Park in the Eastern Avenue neighborhood, where we have the park. It was very not-so-good-looking, and it looks beautiful now. I was just there today, and there was a lot of people playing in there and enjoying themselves, and we're looking forward to doing some more good things this summer. But Betsy brought me along for the Kids Art Festival, so I'll be able to teach some kids this really cool rap that I learned when I was in elementary school, that I wanted to pass down to the next generation, and it's called Elevate. It goes, "Now is the time to elevate your mind. So many people dying from senseless crimes. Stop the violence. We can't be silenced. Life is sacred. We must stop taking it from each other. So love your brother, respect your sister, respect each other, and elevate your mind. Elevate, elevate, elevate your mind." So with the help of Betsy and the Kids Art Festival, I'll be able to teach that poem to some kids in Schenectady, as well as come up with maybe our own fun rap or poem together, and hopefully perform it at Schenectady Summer Nights. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor?
My name is Diablo. I'm going to repeat a common apartheid museum. But first, traffic and weather. Look, the last time I came here, the county was passing a resolution honoring the Irish people. The writing in the resolution says that after Bloody Sunday, Ireland became more violent. However, what the resolution don't say is that today Ireland is a free democratic republic and not a violent and terrorist country. This is not a matter of semantics. This is more a lack of historical knowledge that needs to be changed. Now I'm going to repeat my comment. David Wico wants to change the name of the city, and Ray Gillen wants to change the name of the street where the museum is located because there is no attendance. What these two men want to say is that, first of all, that the past is the past, and it has no room in people's present mind. And secondly, that Schenectady is not Schenectady anymore. There are too many Negroes Gallanes and too many Negroes coming from New York City to live here in Schenectady.
Okay. If you're going to continue along those lines, I'm going to ask you to sit down, or we're going to turn the microphone off. Your comments should be respectful and directed to me.
Oh, I disrespect.
No race baiting, nothing like that. So if you have something to say regarding county business, you say it to me. If you don't, then you can sit down.
I don't mean to disrespect anybody.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor?
Hi, Lynn Bruning, one three three eight eight, Duensburg Road, Delanson, one two oh five three. It's good to see everybody again, some new faces. I'm here to applaud Glenville for holding a public hearing to consider a two-year moratorium on solar, and I encourage all of the taxpayers to support the moratorium and suggest that the town also consider a moratorium on battery energy storage. If your town has not revised their solar, wind, and battery laws in the past couple of years, I encourage you to contact your town board tonight and request that they adopt a moratorium on solar and battery energy storage. Then review your laws in relation to recent technological developments and lessons learned in neighboring towns. As many of you know, in May of 2018, Eden Renewables submitted an application for Oak Hill Solar One and Two in Duensburg. It abuts two thousand five hundred feet of my property line, and I learned about it just ten days before the public hearing. September of 2019, it was approved by the planning board. No one spoke in favor of the project, and the overall site plan doesn't provide a scale. It's not stamped by a licensed engineer, and it omits equipment, specifically the battery storage. In October 2019, NYSERDA awarded the project more than seven point seven million dollars in contracts. And by November of 2019, the project was sold to a Canadian company, Amp Energy. In March of 2020, the dilapidated building on the project site, who, that had to be removed as a condition of the project, it exploded with such a force, it just left a hole in the ground, and Route Seven was closed for more than four hours. July of 2021, Green Cells is the contractor. They're based out of Atlanta, and they came to, in front of the town board, planning board, to request an amendment to add four fifty-three-feet-in-length containers filled with lithium-ion batteries. They wanted to double the roads and increase the site disturbance from zero point eight eight acres to more than sixty-nine acres. The contractor also informed the town that the height of the tracking solar array would double from seven point five feet to fourteen point five feet. And when the panels are parallel to the ground, which they are sometimes at night and always during storm conditions, they're nine feet tall. They're flat. They're taller than some people's ceilings. And when the panels, and at this meeting, the contractor admitted he had never installed battery storage, and that battery storage was never shown on the 2019 site plan. In August of 2021, the planning board held a public hearing for the amendment. No one spoke in favor of the project. October of 2021, AMP secured a mortgage from Cit Bank for a combined total of twenty-nine million, three hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars for two of those projects. New York Green Bank assisted in facilitating that mortgage. The Schenectady County Clerk collected more than three hundred thousand dollars in filing fees, and the permit, the building permit for this project, it had not even been secured. They didn't have a building permit. In fact, the project's amendment hadn't even been approved. But they were afforded a mortgage, a very large one. December of 2021, more than four years after the initial application, Oak Hill Solar finally conducted a percolation test, and unsurprisingly, of course, it failed. It's in Duensburg. Everything is wet. And even though the planning board informed the taxpayers that public comment was closed, concerned citizens continued to submit comments that the project's stormwater plan to discharge water if off-site was inadequate. None of the abutters agreed to a stormwater discharge easement. In January of 2022, Oak Hill Solar provided their stormwater plans to the DEC. I'm told this is the first time the DEC saw their plans. And DEC began to require bio-retention ponds and additional stormwater measures to protect the abutters. There remains great concern if the project can or if it will manage their own stormwater. March seventeenth, the Duensburg Planning Board approved the amendment with some conditions. And then in April seventh, just this week, the workers are flagging the project fence line. The planning board approved a six-foot-in-height fence. The site plan reflects an eight-feet-in-height fence, and national electric code requires fences of at least seven feet in height. I'm looking forward to seeing how the developer resolves that matter. The point is, the developers are responsible to their investors, not your town, not the neighbors, and not the environment. Only the investors, and that is their goal, is to give the investor a good return on their investment. Glenville is smart to pause all projects and review their laws with a keen eye on protecting the taxpayers' rights. Do not let what happened in Duensburg happen in your town. Pick up your phone, contact the town boards, contact your supervisors, encourage them to place a moratorium on solar and battery storage. And please do not hesitate to ever contact me. I'm happy to talk to you about solar. I'm happy to show you the site. I've provided you some images, and if you look at this, there's a little tiny dot. That's me. This sixty-five acres, that's the solar panels. These projects are massive. This is not, this is not a rural agricultural area. This is the industrialization of it. The other image, of which I just dropped, thank you so much, is how high the tracking solar panels will be. These are images of which were never presented in 2019. Nobody understood this, and my, my planning board, as many planning boards, it's filled with volunteers. It's filled with people that are responsible for taking care of parents, grandparents, children, school boards. They don't understand, know, or have time to do all the research, and the developers rely upon their ignorance. And what has happened in Duensburg is happening all over New York State, and it will happen in your town. You think you may be urban, and you don't have the room? The developers will find the room, and all you have to do is follow what's happening on Curry Road in the town of Colony. It's the same developer next to me. The public hearings are just starting, and it's the exact same thing. The site plans do not have scale. They omit the neighbors' homes. They don't show the equipment. Pay attention. It's coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor?
I'm Petey Vorus. I still live in the city. Thank you very much for that, giving this young lady that time. It was very worthwhile, listening to her. I only, I came this evening for one thing only, and it's been something that's not been talked about for a lot of years, and that's the Glenville Nursing Home. The last time we heard from them was they were still running in arrears five million dollars a year. And the only one that ever came here to speak about Glenville Nursing Home was the bus driver, who had some, not only employment there, but also had a family member involved. But we've heard nothing, because there have been so many people that have been directors. I have gone online just to get a list of directors that have come and gone from Glenville Nursing Home. I'm still looking for that information, and I still want to know what the financial situation is there. That's all I came for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor?
All right. So recently, Spectrum News and News Channel Six have been following this really cool thing that's happened in Schenectady County, in Albany County as well. So a local DJ, he put on a concert series for young people, people of all ages, to come and share their music in a great positive way, as well as connect some community resources with some local musicians, as well as some young people, get everyone together for some a really cool time. The name of the concert series was called More Music Less Violence, and his name is DJ Hollywood, and he's here to speak a little bit about it right now.
Hi, guys. Sending blessings to everyone. So I am here to talk about something very, very important and dear to my heart, which is the next generation, you know, our youth. And, you know, I grew up, you know, playing sports and was always, you know, in extracurricular activities. You know, I'm originally from Brooklyn, New York, but came up to, you know, the Capitol District for college, Hudson Valley Community College, played football there. You know, that was kind of my story and, you know, what I wanted to do. You know, things took a turn, and, you know, I ended up getting cut from the football team. And, you know, with me having a background in extracurricular activities, it allowed me to, you know, find a secondary and, you know, third option, which was music. And I graduated, you know, from Hudson Valley Community College, then eventually graduated from U Albany with a communications degree, did radio there, you know, still following in the path of music, and it allowed me to, you know, find my passion and my purpose. And then from there, worked with the Boys and Girls Club. You see the shirt? The shirt feeds kids. And from there, you know, found another purpose, which was, you know, influencing and, you know, influencing the youth to follow music and, you know, find other careers within music besides being a rapper or, you know, the producer, just the typical, you know, musical jobs, per se. Now I bring this over to, you know, to a more relevant point. You know, the violence that has been going on in the Capitol District hasn't been halted at all, and I think with giving the youth more options and resources to, you know, express themselves, this will take them off the streets and, you know, keep them more involved and engaged, you know, after school, during the summer, you know, spring recess, winter recess. So I see on here, Resolution fifty-four, it says it's fifty thousand dollars for programs to reduce gun violence. And like my friend said, my comrade said, I threw two events, well, three events so far. The last one was in Schenectady, but the first one was in Troy, New York. The second one was in Albany, New York, and the last one was at the Seat Center in Schenectady. For those of you who don't know what the Seat Center is, it's a center that, you know, it gives people that secondary option, you know, just like I got when I was, you know, an eighteen-year-old at Hudson Valley Community College. I say this to say that we definitely should invest into our youth from early. You know, I came out here at eighteen years old, and I didn't have the ultimate sense of direction, but I knew that I wanted to, you know, make a better me. And some of our youth don't have that extra, you know, guidance or motivation within their households, you know, and they need to get into these programs at a Boys and Girls Club or a, whatever it may be, whatever program it may be. But they need that option. So along with the More Music Less Violence Initiative, I also teach kids DJ lessons. I teach them how to beat make, you know, and give them that extra option, and you don't just have to be the rapper, which you see on TV, and there's a thousand TVs in here. It's kind of hard to avoid a TV, all right? But you only see them as, you only see the rapper, you only see the producer, or whatever it may be. But giving kids a different option within, you know, the entertainment industry. You could be a stylist, you can be, you can, you can, you know, be an engineer, whatever it may be, but there's definitely options out there. And I feel like that's what we need to emphasize with our youth, is that there's options, you know. I had an artist that I used to work with, he just passed away due to gun violence, you know, and it wasn't even out here, it was in Atlanta, New York, but he moved from Albany, New York, because he felt like there wasn't any options for him, and went back to Atlanta. And unfortunately, he thought he was solving a problem, but he was actually walking into it. So like I said, giving kids the options is definitely the key, in my opinion. You guys could believe it? You could not. But, you know, according to statistics, people who, you know, get into these extracurricular activities, you know, progress in life, and I'm a living example to that. And, yeah, like I said, the More Music Less Violence Initiative, our concert series, it's pushed to all people, all ages. At the last one at the Seat Center, we had over ninety attendees. We had a thirteen-year-old perform, a fifteen-year-old perform, even a forty-year-old perform. And it was an amazing turnout, you know, great feedback, to the point that, you know, now we're going to make our way to Saratoga, New York. And something like that, you know, I've been funding on my own, and it would be, you know, amazing to get the help, you know, fifty thousand dollars. That's a, it's a nice, nice, you know, nice. amazing to get the help, you know, $50,000, that's a nice, you know, nice sum of money. But, you know, on a serious note, though, I feel like we definitely should invest in our youth, you know, before it's too late. And, you know, we hear the story of what could have happened, but, you know, if we invest early, we can, you know, predict the future for our youth. So, on that note, more music, less violence. Stay blessed, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor? Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor? Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor? CNN, privilege of the floor is now closed. Thank you all for your comments. Now call to our other April regular meeting of the County Legislature, but please take the roll.
Mr. Fields.
President.
Mr. Uzo.
President.
Mr. Pratt.
President.
Mr. McGill.
President.
Mr. Constantine.
Here.
Mr. Scada.
Here.
Mr. Frisoni.
Present.
Mr. Cuomo.
Here.
Mr. Paterno.
Present.
Ms. Osrolic.
Here.
Mr. Hess.
Here.
Mr. McGary.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Present.
Mr. McDonald is absent, Mr. Juzinski.
Present.
Fourteen, I, one absent.
Taking members to see copies of the minutes from the meetings held on March 8th, is there a motion to adopt the minutes? So moved. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are hereby adopted. Clerk will read the list of reports received.
We've received reports from the Commissioner of Finance, Department of Ways and Standards, and County Clerk.
Thank you. Under Committee Report, Legislature, Astralich with reports from the Committee on Health, Housing, and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Health, Housing, and Human Services met on April 4th, 2022, and reported to the agenda Resolutions 59 and 60.
Thank you. Legislature Frisoni, reports from the Committee on Labor and Civil Service.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Labor and Civil Service met on April 4th, 2022, and reported to the agenda Resolutions 61, 62, 63, and 64.
Thank you, sir. Legislature Paterno with reports from the Committee on Public Facilities and Infrastructure.
Chairman, thank you. The Committee on Public Facilities, Transportation, and Infrastructure met on April 4th, 2022, and reported to the agenda Resolutions 65 and 66.
Thank you. Legislature Constantine with reports from the Committee on Public Safety and Firefighting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Public Safety and Firefighting met on April 4th, 2022, and reported to the agenda Resolution 67.
Thank you. Legislature Fields, report some of the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Ways and Means, sorry, the Committee on Rules met earlier this evening and reported to the agenda Resolutions 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, and 58.
Thank you, sir. Also reports from the Committee on Ways and Means.
And the Committee on Ways and Means met on April 4th, and thank you very much for those who shared, and reported to the agenda Resolutions 59, 63, 65, 66, and 67.
Thank you, sir. There are three ceremonial resolutions on the agenda this evening, there are Resolutions 50, 51, and 52. I'll open the floor for discussion of these resolutions.
I just want to say congratulations to both teams, the basketball teams, I did follow them in the news, wasn't able to get to any of their games, but it's always exciting to see our young people being successful, whether that be in any type of field that they're in. So, congratulations to them and congratulations to the schools.
Thank you. Any further discussion? CNN, with a clerk, please call the roll on ceremonial resolutions 50, 51, and 52. Members may know any resolution at which they wish to be recorded in the negative.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Uzo.
Aye.
Mr. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Scada.
Yes.
Mr. Frisoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Osrolic.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Aye.
Mr. McGary.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
McDonald is absent, Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Fourteen, I, one absent.
Thank you, the resolution has passed. Our next time is Resolution 53-22, sponsors of Committee on Rules, the clerk will read.
A resolution to amend the 2022 capital improvement program to provide additional funding for the underground fuel tank replacement project at Keller Avenue in the town of Rotterdam.
Any discussion? CNN, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Uzo.
Aye.
Mr. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Scada.
Yes.
Mr. Frisoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Osrolic.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Aye.
Mr. McGary.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
McDonald is absent, Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Fourteen, I, one absent.
Thank you, the resolution has passed. Our next time is Resolution 54-22, sponsors of Committee on Rules, the clerk will read.
A resolution regarding the acceptance of monies from the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services for programs to reduce gun violence.
Any discussion? CNN, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Uzo.
Aye.
Mr. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Scada.
Yes.
Mr. Frisoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Osrolic.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Aye.
Mr. McGary.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
McDonald is absent, Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Fourteen, I, one absent.
Thank you, the resolution has passed. Our next time is Resolution 53-22, sponsors of Committee on Rules, the clerk will read.
A resolution to amend the 2022 capital improvement program to provide additional funding for the underground fuel tank replacement project at Keller Avenue in the town of Rotterdam.
Any discussion? CNN, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Uzo.
Aye.
Mr. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Scada.
Yes.
Mr. Frisoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Osrolic.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Aye.
Mr. McGary.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
McDonald is absent, Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Fourteen, I, one absent.
Thank you, the resolution has passed. Our next time is Resolution 54-22, sponsors of Committee on Rules, the clerk will read.
A resolution regarding the acceptance of monies from the American Library Association to support programming and the humanities.
Any discussion? CNN, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Uzo.
Aye.
Mr. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Scada.
Yes.
Mr. Frisoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Osrolic.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Aye.
Mr. McGary.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent, Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Fourteen, I, one absent.
Thank you, the resolution has passed. Our next time is Resolution 57-22, sponsors of Committee on Rules, the clerk will read.
A resolution to authorize a shift differential bonus for certain employees at the Glendale Nursing Home.
Any discussion? CNN, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Uzo.
Aye.
Mr. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Scada.
Yes.
Mr. Frisoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Osrolic.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Aye.
Mr. McGary.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent, Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Fourteen, I, one absent.
Thank you, the resolution has passed. Our next time is Resolution 58-22, sponsors of Committee on Rules, the clerk will read.
A resolution awarding funds to various organizations pursuant to the 2022 county initiative program.
Any discussion? CNN, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Uzo.
Aye.
Mr. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Scada.
Yes.
Mr. Frisoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Osrolic.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Aye.
Mr. McGary.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent, Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Fourteen, I, one absent.
Thank you, the resolution has passed. Our next time is Resolution 59-22, sponsors of Legislature, Astralich, the clerk will read.
A resolution regarding budgetary amendments to the Office of Community Services operating budget to reflect increased state aid.
Any discussion? CNN, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Uzo.
Aye.
Mr. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Scada.
Yes.
Mr. Frisoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Osrolic.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Aye.
Mr. McGary.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent, Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Fourteen, I, one absent.
Thank you, the resolution has passed. Our next time is Resolution 60-22, sponsors of Legislature, Astralich, the clerk will read.
A resolution regarding budgetary amendments to the Office of Community Services operating budget to reflect increased state aid.
Any discussion? CNN, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Uzo.
Aye.
Mr. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Scada.
Yes.
Mr. Frisoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Osrolic.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Aye.
Mr. McGary.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent, Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Fourteen, I, one absent.
Thank you, the resolution has passed. Our next time is Resolution 61-22, sponsors of Legislature, Frisoni, the clerk will read.
A resolution authorizing the county manager to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with CSEA Local 1000, AFSMI AFLCIO Local 885, representing the Central Dispatch Unit.
Any discussion?
Just have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Sir Frisoni.
I just wanted to acknowledge the UCC and the people there that do great work, especially this week, which is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. So I just want to acknowledge them and congratulate them on their new bargaining agreement.
Sir, any further discussion? CNN, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Uzo.
Aye.
Mr. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Scada.
Yes.
Mr. Frisoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Osrolic.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Aye.
Mr. McGary.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent, Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Fourteen, I, one absent.
Thank you, the resolution has passed. Our next time is Resolution 65-22, sponsors of Legislature, Frisoni, the clerk will read.
A resolution authorizing the implementation and funding of 100% of the cost of a transportation project, which qualified costs may be reimbursed from Bridge New York Funds.